Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yanez?
Here.
Mrs. Zarco?
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to take a couple of minutes to update everyone on the snow emergency that we had over the weekend. All in all, things went very well. We were lucky enough to be able to issue the warning well in advance, so we had very good compliance with on-street parking. Nevertheless, we did have to issue 393 citations for individuals that parked on the road. However, we were able to give warning to 430. Those were people that were out and about and saw our crews coming down the roads and quickly were able to remove their cars, so they did not get citations. So, all in all, we had just over 800 vehicles that had to be moved off the street. And as you can see now, the emergency's over. It ended a couple of days ago, and everything is in order now. We're still doing a little touch-up here and there, but I wanted to commend the DPW Department for doing just an outstanding job. They work really hard at this, and they're very proud of the work they do. And so, I wanted to recognize them. And also, our enforcement crew, both in police and code enforcement, who were out to early morning hours, making sure that we could get the cars off the road and everyone was safe, getting the streets plowed. And so, hopefully that will be the end, but I suspect not. I'm sure we'll probably get another one or two of these, but we're ready. And I also wanted to mention again, we had our Census 2020 kickoff last Thursday. That was well-attended. We had a number of ambassadors that volunteered to sign up and help us spread the word about the importance of the Census 2020 and the "Count Me In" campaign that we have underway in Sterling Heights. And I'd like to take the privilege now of introducing our Budget and Finance Director, Jennifer Varney, who's going to provide more details on our entire efforts with the Census and also introduce a very special guest this evening.
Good evening. I believe we're going to start with the video first. I think... maybe...
Hi, I'm Sterling Heights Mayor Michael Taylor. This spring, Sterling Heights residents will have the opportunity to help retain important federal funding for our community by completing the 2020 Census. Census notifications will be mailed to everyone in mid-March with information on how to complete the questionnaire. If you need help filling out your census, resources will be available at the Public Library, the New Community Center, and the CalDian Community Foundation. The Census is important because if even a handful of our residents go uncounted, our residents can lose millions in federal funding that helps support programs we all use, like Medicaid, student loans, nutrition programs, road construction, and more. So, please complete your census by April 1st. And remember, when we're all counted, we all win.
Be counted! Count me in!
All right, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool... Pool, excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Koschubsky, members of council and city residents. I'm excited to take a little break from why I usually come here, to talk about budgets and numbers and graphs and charts, and talk about the importance of the upcoming 2020 Census. So, first of all, what is the Census? So, the Census is a physical count of all people in the United States, regardless of age, gender, ethnicity, or immigration status. It is required by the Constitution every 10 years and determines the number of representatives and federal tax dollars to be distributed to the people of a community. So, little history. The very first census was conducted in 1790, and since its inception, the number of U.S. representatives has grown from 65 to the current 435 members. This number was capped in 1929, so there is a limited number of representatives to be divided amongst the 50 states. So, why is the Census important? First, representation. After the 2010 Census, Michigan was allocated 14 representatives, and that was actually a decrease in that census. So, we actually lost one representative in 2010, and it is predicted that we might lose another one in this census. So, we need to do our best to make sure that doesn't happen by making sure that every person is counted. Why else is the Census important? Funding. Census data also determines how much federal funds are given to the states. In fiscal year 2016, Michigan received more than $29 billion in federal funds for programs such as Medicaid, nutrition programs such as SNAP and WIC, education, road construction, and low-income housing. It is estimated that Michigan will lose $1,800 per person per year for 10 years for every person not counted. So, an under-count in Sterling Heights of just 2,000 people would result in less $3.6 billion annually to our residents, or $36 million over 10 years. And this is services that are used by our residents. So, accurate data enables federal, state, and local officials to determine the need for current and future programs, and that's a lot of money in programs and services. So, think about the programs and services that you or someone you know may use. Community. Census data is also used to determine the changing needs of the community. It helps our local legislators and administration to determine how many police officers and firefighters we need to keep our residents safe. Community members use census data to develop initiatives to improve the quality of life, neighborhood, and influence laws. And the business community also uses census data to determine what types of businesses are needed in a community, and this in turn can create jobs in our community. The city of Sterling Heights is currently the fourth-largest city in the state and is still growing. SAMCOG estimates that Sterling Heights has grown 2.3% since the 2010 Census. An accurate census count is vital to ensure Michigan receives the appropriate amount of funding to support our residents. So, let's talk a little bit about when this is going to happen. In mid-March, residents will receive a postcard explaining how to complete the Census. This is the very first year that you'll be able to complete the Census online, and this is the fastest and easiest way to respond. And once you respond, you shouldn't receive any further communication from the Census Bureau. Multiple notices will be mailed throughout April to those who have not responded yet, and for those who did not respond by the end of April, Census workers will start knocking on doors in May to try to get a complete count. Census information and supporting material will be translated into 59 different languages, and the city will have resources available, including computers, at the library, the New Community Center, the Senior Center, to assist people in completing the Census. So, we need your help. There is a great opportunity for residents to become Census ambassadors dedicated to increasing awareness, dispelling myths, identifying hard-to-count populations, and motivating others to respond to the 2020 Census. Only with your help and partnering with the community organizations that represent our citizens can we ensure that every resident counts. Stay tuned for ways that you can help. We are especially working hard to ensure a complete count of populations that have historically been undercounted. Some examples include those with language barriers, people experiencing homelessness, children under five years old, single-parent households, renters, and college students. It is important that we reach all of these populations to ensure an accurate count. This is where Census ambassadors can really make a difference. It is important to understand that the information collected through the Census will be used purely for informational and funding purposes. And in fact, Title 13 of the U.S. Code actually makes it a felony to share respondents' information with anyone, including government and law enforcement agencies. You may also wonder what type of information the Census asks. The Census asks only basic demographic information. If you have a social media account, you probably already have more information on the web than the Census will ask you. And the Census will not ask for your citizenship status or your social security number. The city is embarking on a very exciting public education campaign to make sure everyone is counted. We started with letters in the January water bills, which will continue throughout February and March. We have created foam boards with A-frames that will be located at all city facilities. We are in the process of considering contracts to advertise on cable television and in movie theaters using the video that you just saw earlier, and we will be attending community gatherings and meetings throughout the city. Some examples are listed here, but we would love to speak at your community organization. And you may have noticed when you walked into the council meeting, an example of one of our Smart Buses that was wrapped, so you'll be seeing these vehicles around the city. Last week, we introduced our mascot, Sterling Be Counted. Sterling will attend all community events and would love to attend your event. Please contact Community Relations if you're interested, and I'm not sure, but I think we might get a special visit from Sterling tonight. Our corps officers will also have census information and our selfie frames with them while they patrol our neighborhoods, and would love to get some pictures with residents to post on our social media sites. We are promoting the hashtag Sterling Be Counted, as well as Be Counted, on all of our social media posts, and we hope that you will be able to share these as well. And we have a dedicated website, www.sterling-heights.net/census2020, and there will be a lot of information about the Census posted here. So, as I mentioned earlier, we need your help. We need Census ambassadors. There are many ways you can help to make sure everyone is counted. You can invite us to speak at a meeting. You can share our social media posts. You can affix door hangers to your neighborhood or nearby neighborhoods. You can volunteer to help with events we are hosting, or you can get a poster to display at your business or organization to promote completing the Census. We need everyone's help. If you are interested, go to the City's Census 2020 website and click on "Become an Ambassador" to fill out the online form. We also have some forms here tonight for those in the audience. And you will receive follow-up from someone on the city's Census team and a Census Ambassador kit that will include a bumper magnet, a t-shirt, and other supplies. So, thank you for your attention, and now I think we have a special guest that would like to say hello.
Well, come on out.
Sterling!
So, hello, Sterling. How are you doing this evening? Are you excited to make sure everyone is counted in the 2020 Census? So, why don't you tell us a little about yourself, Sterling? How old are you? Sterling is three years old. And what was your favorite subject in school? Sterling said he really enjoyed spelling and was actually the spelling bee champion. And what about your favorite novel? Sterling's favorite novel is The Great Gatsby. And what about your favorite sport, Sterling? Sterling loves rugby. Well, thank you, Sterling, for coming to support the 2020 Census, and now I'd like to invite city council down to meet Sterling and get a picture with Sterling.
All right, let's do it. Going this way?
Do we do an individual picture, Sterling, sir?
Hi, Sterling!
You guys got a bee?
Well, just like, wait, wait.
I do, thanks. Thanks, Sterling.
Thank you, Sterling.
Thank you, Sterling.
Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate that presentation, and certainly, we're going to have a lot more information about the Census as these next few months go on. A very important thing happening in our community this year. Before we get on to the next item on our agenda, I want to recognize another special guest we have in the audience, a fellow mayor and elected official from a neighboring community, the city of Utica, Tom Deon, and his wife are in the audience. And thank Tom for being here and his partnership on a number of things that we've done. And I think our council is exceptional in how well it works with our other communities, especially our neighboring communities, and we appreciate your partnership and thank you, and wish you guys nothing but success over in Utica. So, thank you for being here, Mayor Deon. With that, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is an ordinance introduction, and this is to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the City Code to update the city massage establishment regulations. A presentation from our Assistant City Attorney, Don Denault. Mr. Denault?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to be here this evening. If I don't have my usual flair, I'm feeling a little bit under the weather, so don't get too close and try not to breathe the same air. I don't know if I'm sick, but it's just a weird feeling today that something's about to hit. So, with that behind us, I don't have any really interesting or fun facts for you for this particular ordinance introduction, but the origin of this ordinance that we're bringing to you tonight is to just make some updates and some tweaks to what we already have on our books. As you... some of you may recall, and others may not, we go all the way back to when we track the history of this ordinance, to 1995, when the Michigan Court of Appeals struck down a Ferndale ordinance that was regulating massage therapists and massage parlors. It was struck down at the local level because the state law regulated the entire field, so Ferndale could not get involved. Thereafter, the state ended up deregulating and saying, "We're not going to regulate this anymore. We're going to leave it to the local communities to decide." So, in 2006, we put together a comprehensive ordinance that licensed massologists, as they were known, or massage therapists, as we tend to know them today, and the massage businesses themselves. Then, the legislature got involved again shortly after that and said, "Well, we're going to take back the licensing function for the massage therapists, the individuals who do the work." So, that preempted us locally from licensing massage therapists, so in 2014, we amended the ordinances again to address that and just keep our comprehensive ordinance on the books for massage establishments. As many of us know, unfortunately, in the news in the past six months or so, there have been a number of high-publicity stories involving massage establishments throughout the country and even certainly in the local area that have caused us to revisit the ordinance with the police department's help, to take a good look at whether or not we're doing all that we can in Sterling Heights to make sure that we're fostering good businesses, but we're also making sure that nothing illegal or illicit is happening in that industry. A number of states are really affected by this, more than Michigan, but Michigan is certainly not untouched by the illicit part of the industry. But a number of states have been enacting initiatives and other things that they can try to do to be creative, to try to address any businesses that really shouldn't be operating or aren't part of the legitimate massage establishment industry throughout the country. With that, after sitting down with the police department and other departments of the city, we looked at all of the different things we may be able to do, and we came up with a couple of different ideas for just tightening some loopholes and buttoning up a few ideas that maybe we didn't cover the first time around. In the intent portion, we've added some explanations for the city that, you know, obviously, we're trying to prevent illicit activities at massage establishments. We're trying to make sure that human trafficking and prostitution aren't part of the city of Sterling Heights. We've created a more comprehensive definition of massage establishment to make sure that we cover places that offer massage as a service to people. We've defined the practice of massage therapy to exempt massage from the neck up, because that's part of cosmetology and beauty schools. We've added an interesting note to the new ordinance about Reiki, and if any of you have ever heard of Reiki, or anybody watching has or has not heard of this practice, this is sort of a newer concept in America, but it's a concept that you can work with a person's energy without actually touching them to effectively do what might be considered a massage in some ways, but you're not manipulating tissue. You're not manipulating the person's body with that practice. What we've found, though, is because the industry is learning about that practice, they sometimes tell the police, "Well, that's all we do here, so therefore, we're not really a massage business." So, we added a little something in the ordinance just to make sure that they're legitimate, that they have a master teacher license for that practice. They have very comprehensive certification requirements in that industry and classes that people can take, and it's quite extensive. And if they can get to that level, then obviously, they're a legitimate Reiki practice. Administration has also looked carefully at how many we have, and the concept is being proposed for council tonight, that we establish a cap. The city of Troy has done that. There are a few communities throughout the country that we've found that are doing that now as a new practice. It hasn't been a common practice, but the administration is proposing a cap of 12 massage licensed businesses. That doesn't mean that we would start eliminating any that are currently in existence. We've done the best we can to track down how many we have right now that are either primary massage, ancillary, or maybe they offer it as a side service. And if we exempt and take out the medical, we're probably at somewhere around 20 or less, because then there's a couple of schools and a yoga studio. But what we have identified is we have 12, which is the number that we're proposing for the cap. We actually have 12 that represent themselves as just massage establishments. That's their primary purpose and function. The reason for the number 12 would be that those 12 obviously are covered, and everybody else that's still in the industry would be covered and exempt. But as businesses start to fade out, or go out of business, or close down, or move out of the city, we wouldn't want to encourage any of the businesses that maybe are shut down for whatever reasons to just reopen. And if we had licenses that weren't being used, it would give them the out to just sell it to somebody new, or have a straw sale of some kind, and try to reopen under a different name or a different ownership. So, that's the proposal for the cap that administration has reached. Beyond that, the ordinance has just a couple of other things as far as due process goes. We have a new provision or a new section in there that talks about the city clerk's ability to act when there is a problem that's discovered. It's not mandatory to act, but for the certain... for the much more serious violations, an immediate suspension can be imposed, and then we have a due process provision for how to have a hearing if the business desires to appeal that decision and try to stay open. What we have found, a lot of times, is they don't. If you even look nationally, once they're closed down for doing something illegal or improper, they tend to just move on. But every once in a while, there are some that want to stay and either try to effect a sale to someone new, or create a restructured ownership, or try to fool the community. So, we would have a hearing process for those that want to stay or that want to contest any suspension or revocation or denial that's imposed. So, with that, I think that's a broad summary. There's a couple of little language tweaks and a couple of other minor updates on some of the sanitary standards, but that should be the broad-based summary for you, and I'm here for you if you have questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Denault. At this time, I'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make any comments on this item? If not, council, we need a motion. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Yanez?
Resolved to introduce the ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the City Code to update the city's massage establishment regulations.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, Mr. Yanez?
No discussion. I think this is a good update. You know, I think it's been... I think it's clear that human trafficking has been a real problem in this country for a long time, and a lot of that goes through these massage establishments, so I think we're doing a good thing by updating our law.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. Council, anyone else? Mayor? Mr. Radke?
For the chair, Mr. Denault. I know when we saw this presentation in closed session, you referred to how other communities around us have started to regulate this. Could you tell us, how many licenses does the city of Troy allow?
The city of Troy recently initiated a cap of 18.
18.
And I did... I kind of, in thinking about that question more in anticipation of tonight, I don't have a formal number for you, but I did two searches, in case you were curious about Troy's licensing. If you do just a standard Yelp search for massage establishments, you find 10. If you do a Google Maps search, you find 15. So, it doesn't appear they have maximized the use of that 18.
Right. I guess my one concern is, while I want to stamp out human trafficking and prostitution in Sterling Heights, I don't want to harm honest business owners who want to serve the community. We are a larger community than Troy, both in size and in population, so I think that we should have a similar regulation. So, in my opinion, I wish the city council, if we bring this back up next meeting, would raise the cap to 18. Don't have to have 18 licenses, but I want to have them available just in case. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Council, anyone else? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's John Matthews. I live on Maple Crest Road, which is just up to Quinder, north of 15 Mile. Items F and G on the consent agenda speak directly to the Census outreach concern. Being a teacher in school, each fall, we have something we call "Count Month," where we make sure that all of our students are counted. It's like a mini census for us, and I know each one of those students is about $10,000 from the state roughly attached to them that goes towards funding the buildings, the programs, the staff, everything at the schools. Now, the combined cost of items F and G for outreach is only about $41,000. And I bring this up because I know there's a lot of people who like to complain about how the city spends money. Now, the numbers that we heard earlier, $1,800 a year, or for the total term of the census, $18,000 per person, mean that you would only need three people who are reached by both of these items to pay for themselves. And I think that's a very low number of people you would need to be reached by these advertising items, and that would be a very wise expense to spend, in my opinion, because I've seen how hard it is to get, I mean, teenagers, you know, to show up and be counted at school sometimes. I can only imagine how hard it would be to get all the people who may not speak English as their first language, or your three-year-old children, or people moving from place to place in a big community. So, I just wanted to go on the record and make it clear to people that that expense is actually very small in the very large scope of money attached to the census. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else on the consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Moved to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a consideration item, and this is to consider nominations to city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, I believe this is the zoning board of appeals. There is one opening. It's a city council appointment. Is there anyone who has a nomination or would like to make a motion to postpone to the February 4th council meeting?
Moved to postpone to the February 4th council meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to consider nominations to the city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, this is the planning commission. There are two vacancies. These were nominations at the last city council meeting for Nathan Inks to a term ending June 30th, 2020, and Pashka Weekai to a term ending June 30th, 2021. There are two suggested actions. Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Saroski?
Resolved to appoint Pashka Weekai to the planning commission as the zoning board of appeals liaison to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting dequalification set forth in chapter subset 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Saroski. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, just very briefly, that I think that this is a very good nomination. This gentleman has been involved in the community for quite a few years. He's a business owner. He is a great... has a great interest in serving the community, so I think this would be... this is a great appointment. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is a second suggested action for Mr. Inks. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Radke? Resolved to appoint Nathan Inks to the...
freedoms, keep us all free and to keep us all safe. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Exciting news for the Sarowski family. Anyone else, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yenness.
I too would like to thank DPW Code Enforcement, PD, and FD for their work during the recent snow emergency. DPW did an outstanding job getting the streets plowed, and I know it's, doesn't come without great difficulty. And secondly, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, I'm concerned about the 393 citations. I don't know what the value of a citation is, if you can inform me on that, but the other thing is, have we ever done a program, a survey, anything, reaching out to people who don't move their cars and finding out why they're not moving their cars? And if not, can we do something like that? Because I'm curious as to why, and you know, this wasn't a sneak attack. Everybody knew the snow emergency was coming, and I'm curious as to why these people aren't moving their cars, and maybe there's a problem there that we can solve if we find out why this isn't happening.
Mr. Vanderpool, any response?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Yenness, it's a good question. No matter how much we try to get the word out and publicize and develop electronic communication and so on, it seems like for every snow emergency, we average between 400 and 500 citations, considering the fact we have, oh, 40,000-plus homes, not to mention multifamily units and probably double that number of vehicles in the community, that's probably, you know, a very good number, and while we should continue to try to do better, I'm just not sure we'll be able to get it too much lower, but we can certainly, you know, maybe do some random sampling of those who did receive tickets and see historically, you know, if they, and repeat offenders, and take a deep dive and try to figure out why. The amount of the ticket is $25, so that's for the first offense, but it goes up significantly for the second offense in a given season, so that's about all I can say right now, but I appreciate the feedback.
Well, thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, and I agree. I think taking a 10 or 15% slice of this number and reaching out to those folks, again, especially if it's repeat offenders, I'm concerned that there are people with physical disabilities, age, what have you, that are getting citations, and because of these difficulties, they're not getting their car off the street, and if that's an issue, maybe we can mark these folks or what have you, but I think we really need to, even though this is a great number, I still think we need to drill down a little bit and see if we can't get that better, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yenness. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Pardon me, folks at home, I had wisdom teeth surgery over the weekend, so I'm not talking as much as I'd want to. I too want to thank DPW for their great job during the snow emergency. I know how impatient it can be to have your street plowed and get your car out. I see all the comments on Facebook and on other media sites, but I think that, you know, 18 hours, really, you know, from start to finish, we plowed the entire 36 miles of Sterling Heights. I think that's a pretty good job, and I think that our DPW should be commended because they went without sleep, they worked almost the entire holiday weekend to make sure people could get out and go to work today. On top of that, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, could you refresh my memory? Several years ago, weren't the fines lowered for snow emergency tickets, Mr. Vanderpool?
Mr. Vanderpool? Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, you're correct, they were lowered. I believe at that point in time, they were $75, and they were reduced to 25. However, they still scale up, so second offense is 75 and then even more than that, and we still reserve the right to tow. Periodically, we do have to tow vehicles, and of course, that's much more money.
What year did we lower it? Do you remember? Was it 2014?
I don't, I can check for you, but I want to say it's like five, six years ago, but I'll have to double-check and report back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. I also have to commend Mr. Vanderpool, he met with me earlier. You know, I think that, like Mr. Matthews said, consent items F and G, really to, I wanted to make sure that we're getting everyone in Sterling Heights counted in the census. It's the most important thing, because for each person we don't count, we lose thousands and thousands of dollars of city money that is due to us. So I met with him earlier today, and he said he's going to put together a plan for also digital outreach, not just on city vehicles or on TV, but also on social media and other ways, and I commend him for that, and I look forward to his report on that so that we can make sure that everyone is counted and we get our fair share. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Radke, thank you. Council, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
I as well would like to thank all our first responders, DPW, for all the long hours they put in through the snow event. I think, through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, I think there's some confusion, and if a street has been plowed already, but the snow emergency hasn't been lifted, people want to park in the street again, so can you tell me our rationale as to why they still can't park in the street if their street's been plowed?
Mr. Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Schmidt, I appreciate that. That is a common question we get, and the problem is, we just don't know, we can't turn in a meteorologist and figure out, are we going to get any more? Are we going to get another two, three inches? Are we going to have to go back into the neighborhoods and salt and/or plow? So that is the reason why we prohibit on-street parking through the entire emergency. There's been cases before, depending on the snow event, depending on changing weather conditions, when we've had to go back in, and of course, as you could imagine, that's difficult to do when cars are back into the street. So we get through the entire city within approximately 36 hours. We publicized 36 of 48 hours, but it's really closer to 36, so we hope that's not too much of an inconvenience, but it's for good reason we prohibit it.
And just, you know, I as well was watching comments on social media, and I was encouraged to see residents say, you know, "I have my neighbors park in my driveway because my cars are in the garage, and they can't fit all their cars in their driveway." Neighbors helping neighbors, that's what we do. It was encouraging to me to see that, you know, people were actually offering to help their neighbors, and I think the more we do for each other, the better off we all are at the end. So with that, DPW, everybody did an amazing job, and thank you again.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Anyone else? If not, I would, I would say, I got those complaints as well about tickets after the plow had already gone through and people moved their car back, so I understand that, and that's the same answer I offered, which is that we don't know whether the snow is going to keep coming, and sometimes, a lot of times, actually, the plows have to come back and touch things up, so I get that entirely. I would just say, maybe, you know, when I hear the number of tickets that were received, a lot of times people say, "Well, why didn't you ever come down, never come down my street, and there's always cars parked on my street?" So what was the number? It was three?
About 400.
About 400. It could have been probably 1,000 or more if we were able to get to every single car. Now, we're just never going to be able to. So I guess I would just offer, if we could coordinate with the code enforcement officers to prioritize the streets that haven't been plowed yet, that would seem to me to be a better use of our resources than going to the areas where it's already been plowed. I understand that we might have to go through there, but we know for sure we're going to have to go through the areas that haven't been plowed yet, so it just seems like in this day and age, with technology and the ability to communicate pretty much instantaneously, that we can somehow get our DPW map, which is publicized, get that to the folks writing those tickets so that we're staying ahead of them as best we can. I think we should, we should look into doing that, but otherwise, I want to echo what Henry said, is that, you know, these guys work incredibly hard. Our DPW is out there around the clock, and I saw a lot of comments on social media that were really supportive of them, too, and I was proud to see that, that you'd have one or two knuckleheads there saying, like, "When is my street ever going to get plowed?", but for the most part, people were really respectful and appreciative of the work that our DPW did, and in very difficult circumstances, you know, our first responders and our police officers and our firefighters and our EMS workers had to battle with those conditions, too, to make sure that people are getting the services that they need, so we thank all of them. And with that, I don't have anything further, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.